It's four o'clock. We'll go ahead and get started. I'd like to welcome everybody to our special meeting here today on the 20th of February. Get the right spot on the... Are there any additions, corrections, or modifications to the current agenda, Ms. Coffin?
Yeah.
All right. Oh, I apologize if I forgot to introduce the board. We have a quorum present. We have Trustee Schwerdell, Trustee Baker, Trustee Graves, and myself, Trustee Venion. And with that, we'll turn the time over to Mr. Mike Cheddarton for the staffing.
All right. So we have this scheduled for an hour and a half. I think there's 25 slides here, so we can go through it as quickly as we want or as slow as we want, but I just want to make sure that we answered a lot of your questions. I want to preface this, begin with just to say that there's a lot of information in here, and what I wanted to do is to try to show all perspective of where the district has been for the last five years, fiscal years, on an overall broad picture, and also get into the new staffing requests that the principals and directors are asking for next year. Now, I also want to just preface everything with this is just a wish list. None of these things are going to be set in stone. Also, the administrative council will make their final recommendations to the board on which positions are funded and which ones are not funded, but it's still the intent of the school district to stay very conservative over the next several years to try to maintain that time period of when we are not front of the voters on supplemental levy as far away as possible. So with that being said, we're going to the second slide. So this is a snapshot of where our fund balance is, what's happened with the fund balance in fiscal year 2006 and '07. And if you look at this, the fund balance in 2000 would have been June, July 1 of 2007 was $2.6 million, and that was the same year that the budget stabilization levy was passed. And you can see what's happened to the fund balance over the course of the last two years as well as the previous four years before that. And if you look back in public records, in 2007, this is what we were projecting with the budget stabilization levy would actually happen with fund balance. The fund balance would grow continually over the years until the tipping point where it would start dropping off and go back into the limit. But if you look back in presentations that we had made to the board back in 2007, 2008, we were projecting that point, that we would be in front of the voters in supplemental levy, which is going to be in fiscal year 2011, '12, which would have been enacted in 2000, late September of 2012. So we've been able to postpone that date for into the future by implementing a lot of the things that we've done, very conservative in new staffing requests, conservative in increases to salary, that we've done, implemented programs like the Schedule D on the salary schedules, really return incentive programs. So if, based on that, some of the highlights regarding that...
And I'm just curious, what were your projections in terms of why we could be managing staff levels compared to that point, what we're doing?
Because in 2006, 2007, 2007, 2008, we were on a track where we were providing staff of about a 7% increase by the time you get the steps percentage increase, as well as we were adding anywhere from 10 to 13 positions a year. The 10 to 13 positions a year has a cost of about $750,000, and on top of that, the 7% increase, we were, the budget was increasing, you know, anywhere about $2.5 million a year. And that would have put us in a situation where we were on front of voters at that.
We put the jokes on a lot of that.
Sure. And it was, yeah, that was much faster than inflation at that time, and I think that was why.
Okay. And also, prior to moving on, I forgot to mention that this is only the first of five or six budget meetings that we're going to be having. We'd really like to welcome the public, and if those who are here have questions, Mike and the board will do the best we can to answer those questions as best we can.
Yeah, I would love to have this as interactive as possible, and if you have any questions, the audience has any questions or anything clarified, feel free. If we start running into time constraints, we need to ease up a little quicker later to hit that 6:30 time limit.
5:30.
5:30. Trying to get an extra hour. Okay, so from the previous slide, you can see where the revenues have been decreasing steadily. So if you look at the general fund revenue, our revenue stream has declined $1.28 million since the fiscal year 2006 and 2007. So you can see the general fund revenues was $50 million, $50.2 million, and this past fiscal year, it was $48.4 million. So we had a decrease of $1.8 million. Basically, 65% of our general fund revenue was frozen on the budget stabilization levy and the other levies that we have associated with property tax. And the increases in the state revenues dried up about four years ago, and it's just been steadily declining over the past four years. So if you look at this, and if all of that $1.8 million in revenue decline over the past seven years is all from state sources, and then for property tax.
Mike, I just have one quick question. Do you think, just, I don't know if people in the audience are aware of the history of budget stabilization and how it affected our district in terms of really giving us a windfall in terms of property tax? So setting that, the backdrop of this on that particular piece of it, because otherwise it seems like we're past our, and the bigger picture is that that budget stabilization, just because it was at the height of the housing market, provided a huge amount of money every year based on housing prices that they're supposed to set in 2003, so that's the backdrop.
Yeah, yes, I mean, if you look at the history behind the budget stabilization levy...
It was created for four school districts in the state of Idaho, and the reason for that was is when they called the special session in August of 2006 to take all of the school districts off of property tax, they didn't have any kind of solution for four school districts because we were so heavily dependent on property taxes. And they weren't going to replace it dollar for dollar with state income tax and state sales tax. So they held the four districts that were in situations like we were harmless. And what it was is they just replaced the amount of money that we were not going to get replaced by the state in a local budget stabilization property tax levy. And the way that levy exists now is it can never be increased, so it's not subject to any type of an increase, like most levies are of a 3%. It's a frozen levy, and the only way it can be increased is on a vote of the public, or it can be decreased on the vote of the school board.
But it's based on 2006 real estate levels, which is the height of the market, and if it's based on the formula before, that, which is what Catherine and I went down to the legislature and fought for, which we even were happy with, that would be 3% of assessed value.
So we would be, we would have...
Go up and down.
Yeah, we would be going up and down with the economy.
No, that's not true. School districts are funded differently than cities and counties are. Our levies are not based on a percentage of a levy rate. Ours is based on a dollar amount. Regardless of what happens with actual market values in the county, our levies have, for the last 40 years, has always stayed at a dollar amount.
Right.
So for example, we levy a dollar amount. If property taxes or if property values in the county goes up, the levy rate goes down. We don't have any control on levy rates. Where counties and cities, they levy on rates, not dollars.
Right. But before that, it was .003% of, that was the, that was what Catherine and I went down and lobbied for. The reason that that was, that's really important is just because they turned a flexible rate that was, would go up and down with the economy into a fixed rate that was, they thought it was going to provide a cap for Blaine County, but it actually provided a floor, and it gave us a lot more money than we thought we would have gotten originally. So that's the backdrop, I think, that we need to be...
That's not entirely true either, because if you look at past 20 years, Blaine County School District has never levied up to the .003 mil cap. We was always 20%, 40% less than that over the course of the years. Now, not until they actually set the levies in 2006 did we levy the full three mils. Every year before that was much less because market value was increasing so quick, we didn't need the money and didn't feel like we should be taking it if we didn't need it.
Right. We took, we didn't, I know we didn't take a few million of it, but my point, I guess my point is that I'm not trying to, you know, argue with you at all. I think that what I'm trying to say is, the backdrop of this is not a district that is in dire straits financially. It's in a district that has been blessed by basically a mistake that the, that the legislature made, you know, in trying to keep a lid on what our spending was, which actually provided a floor for our spending, a lot higher than it would have been with the old formula, at any rate. Right?
Well, it doesn't count, like considering that 65% of our general fund revenue. So without stabilization cap, your last 65% of your budget...
Exactly. And if it had been, if it had been the old formula, which we even thought was great, and it was great, which more than anybody else gets, it would have been, it would have been now, depending on how much our properties, property values are down, say they're down 40%, that budget stabilization amount of 29.5 would be 40% less right now, and we still would have been happy with it because we would have at least been getting property tax where nobody else was getting it. So we still would have been getting twice as much as anybody else in our general fund.
Well, I think my comment to that would be, we would have a third less of our budget than we have now.
That's right.
And our school would look nothing the way it does.
Yes, that's exactly right.
And have a lot of the resources that would have to go away.
Well, exactly.
So I guess, can maybe move to the next topic?
Yeah, no, I just, yeah, the only reason I'm bringing that up is because that's the backdrop of this, is that we do have...
Well, we should be fortunate that we don't have a third lesser right now because our schools wouldn't have most of what it has.
That's my point, exactly.
The fallacy with that is, is the school districts were never levied on rates.
Rates.
So even in the last...
Because you'd be like this every year.
Even in the last six years of what's happened with the state and the, and the property values in Blaine County, that levy would have never decreased in relationship with market value of Blaine County. The levies would have always stayed the same.
In terms of mil rate, but not in terms of percent?
In terms of dollars.
Dollars.
It would have stayed the same in terms of dollars?
Yes.
.003? No?
No.
It's dollars.
In terms of the dollar amount, the actual dollar amount.
The mil rate would change, depending on the values, but the dollar rate would always be the same.
As values go down, the percentage would go up.
Okay, I'd like, we'll talk about this later.
Okay. So the fiscal plan was anticipated seven years ago. The average, we were averaging about nine new positions per year and 7% staff increases when we recognized that it was not going to be sustainable in the future. So we had to do something in this, in the school district to be able to maintain the programs that we had in place and still be able to keep all of the programs and different types of things that were started functioning without running to any type of a financial crisis. And you are right, the stabilization levy was a big key factor in that, but it was something that we fought hard for to try to get that special session and that exception in the state law that would give us that ability. I mean, I don't think anybody could have saw what was going to come to the state or the nation as far as market values at that point in time. 65% of our general fund revenue has been frozen since 2006, and it will remain so until the Board of Trustees and the school district decides on a supplemental levy to the voters, if that ever happens. The general fund, fund balance peaked in the fiscal year 2010, '11. The fund balance will continue to decline steadily over the next several years. The expenditure side of the general fund will continue, continually increase by approximately 4% depending on what new positions that we hire and any type of staff increases in salaries and benefits for the district. So the current fund balance could last approximately three to four years before that time is in front of us. Increases to the state funding could help in the future. As the state revenues have declined $1.7 million since 2008, '09, they've been talking about some type of an increase this year of around approximately 5%. So that'll help offset some of those things, and any type of increases in the future will also delay that time and period of when we have to look at a decision on what we're going to do about funding.
Mike, you may be getting to this later, so I have a habit of asking questions right before presenters give the answers, right, John? But you're, what I just heard was that in three to four years, that $13 million balance would go away. Is it about 12 or 13? I can't remember on the previous slide. So why are our expenses going to be going up, or 12, in three years? Why would our expenses be going up $4 million a year?
They won't be increasing $4 million a year. They'll be increasing somewhere less than that.
Well, if it's...
It wouldn't be four.
If it's three, if you, if you're projecting that in three years, three to four years, this balance will be gone, that's about $4 million a year.
It could be. We'll get into that a little bit longer about why we have to have some type of a fund balance in the future.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Okay.
If you don't maintain a fund balance, if you had to make payroll, how would you do it?
Right.
Without having to draw a warrant?
So if you've got a $2 million fund balance, so it's, let's, or let's say $3 million fund balance, we'll break it down to nine, that's still a $3 million increase in expenses over the next three years that you're projecting, right?
No, not necessarily. No, no, not at all.
I think it depends a lot on what staffing we, if we decide to do any increase in staffing or anything like that.
Right, but all things being equal. Yeah, but I mean, if we had no incremental increases in staffing, then that would be a lot longer period of time, that three to four years?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay. So, okay. So if all things remain the same, at this point, if we had a $3 million reserve, that balance should last a lot longer if we didn't increase our spending.
Right.
Got it.
Absolutely, it would.
Right. And are we anticipating any increases from the state funds? Or are they, are we anticipating additional decrease, like the trend has been?
No, we've been told to budget approximately 5% increases from the state.
Okay.
But a 5% increase from the state is only about $600,000 of additional revenue to us. It's not, I mean, it's a lot of money, but it's not typically what we increase expenditures on, on an annual basis.
A 5% increase from the state isn't really a 5% increase to our budget, because 65% of that is...
Is frozen, right, right. It's minimal.
Yeah, and there's really a lot of factors that's going to affect fund balance in the future because the opening of Seringa Mountain School will have an effect on that. So we'll take a look at that.
Because our ADA will be lower.
Because the ADA will be lower. Okay, Morgan Hat, our auditor, recommends that we keep about a one-month expenditures in a fund balance, and if you look at that, that's approximately $4 million.
Okay.
Once the fund balance drops below about $6 million, the district will be in a position to borrow, will have to borrow in a short-term line of credits to make payroll in December, January, and June, prior to when our property taxes come in. If you look back eight years ago, we were in a situation, because we were so dependent on property taxes, that we were let, we were borrowing about $15 million on short-term borrowing plans so we could make payroll in November, December, and January in anticipation of that property tax coming in, in late January. So the plan was, is we would borrow the 1st of July, invest the money, utilize it when we had to utilize it to pay payroll, and then in July, when we got the property tax, we'd have fully invested again until the end of June, and hopefully make enough interest earnings over the course of the entire year to pay for the interest over the entire year as well. And we were very successful at doing that, but if it drops below the $6 million, we're going to be in situations like that again.
Mm-hmm. Mike, one other quick thing. How do we rate as far as, you know, we've been able to maintain this fund balance? Is that common or uncommon compared to most school districts in Idaho?
Very uncommon. I mean, you look at most school districts, they struggle to get, they struggle to keep 10 or 15 days in a fund balance. There's not, there's not a lot of districts that have any type of a fund balance compared to ours. Okay, this is what enrollments looked like over that same course of time. Fiscal year 2006, we had a total enrollment of 3,161 students. This past fiscal year, we had an enrollment of 3,335 students. So if you look, if it, what's, it happened with enrollment since fiscal year 2007 and '08, the enrollment's been steady over the course of those last six years. And all of these enrollment numbers are based on the end-of-the-year enrollments, whatever at the June time period.
And have you had any word from Seringa about what their enrollment is?
I have not heard. We will make a request to Seringa about which students they have registered, but I don't think their registration closes until March 5th, I believe, is what they said. So it'll be after that point in time when we determine that.
Yeah. So last I knew, they had 142, and they have 35 this year, so I figure a little bit more than 100 right now, net-net, that might come out of this county school district.
Would be coming out if they all go forward with registration, so 100 loss?
I don't know how many of those might be pre-K. I'm not sure.
Okay. That'll be interesting to note when we, when Mike talks to Seringa to find out how that, their actual enrollments compared to whether or not they're our students or not.
Right, so we, you know, about 5,000 or so we lose from the state every kid that wants them, but we save in expenses, and budget stabilization stays the same.
Well, we don't necessarily save in expenses because if it's distributed evenly through the district, we're not really saving a position.
Yeah.
Especially if it's distributed through the grade.
You still have to have the teacher.
Yeah, you still have the bus moving, you still have the teacher there, so it's a minimal cost difference by losing a couple.
Longer term, yeah, longer term. You know, I mean, longer term, that's the way you have to look at it, just because longer term, if you lose 500 kids, you better be cutting back expenses.
Right, right.
Agreed.
That's, that's a different situation than a small number. Okay.
On the, on the next several, or on the next slide, we'll get into a little bit more of this, but what I wanted to do is just define on the terminology coming up, the certified staff positions include classroom art, music, PE, technology teachers, gifted and talented teachers, special education psychologists, social workers, counselors, librarians, behavior specialists, and learning disability teachers. So it's anybody, any person that has a state certification in education would classify as a certified employee. So non-certified positions are all of the other people. So it would include food service, bus drivers, custodians, maintenance, paraprofessionals, secretaries, admin assistants, human resource, finance, and other district office personnel. The administrative positions would include the superintendent, assistant superintendent, principals, vice principals, curriculum director, special services director, and other directors who report to the superintendent. And on the next slide, you'll see, did you have a question, Sean?
I was going to go back in just one second. It mentions food service. Majority of our food service is handled by Chartwells. As I understand it, we still have a few employees that we had prior to Chartwells. How many employees does that remain? Do we know?
Five.
Five.
Yep. Okay, so here's what our staffing level is, and it's based on a formula from the state of Idaho. So if you look at the first column for the administration, they fund us for 11.53 positions through the funding formula. We actually have 18.78 administrative positions. So we're over the state funding level, 7.25 positions. If you look at the instructional or the certified salaries or certified positions, we're funded for 171.08. We actually have 273.93, so we're 102.85 positions over what the state pays us for. Non-certified, we're funded for 57.64. We have 135.92, so we're 78.28 positions over. So total, we're about 188 positions over what the state funds us for.
So this would be, what would be coming out of that stabilization cap that basically the state doesn't reimburse us for at all?
If you look at, if you do look at the funding of the stabilization cap, it is funding all of those 188 positions, as well as, our salary schedule is much higher than the state average, so the difference between what our salary schedule is and the state pays for is also coming out of that stabilization levy.
Could you put that back on? I just needed to, I wasn't quite done. Thank you.
This will all be on the website, so...
Yep, great. Yeah, it's just, I'm just looking here and seeing percentage-wise where we're really, really over, and I'm looking at the non-certified. Not that it's good or bad, it's just that that's glaring.
It's like a three to one?
Percentage, yeah.
Three to one?
The state reimburses very few paraprofessionals and things like that, and we have a great deal more than what the state reimburses.
Ratio-wise, is it three to one, non-cert, two to one cert, and like 1.5 to one on admin?
I think if you look at the percentage over, the administration and the certified are very close together.
Uh-huh.
Same type of a percentage.
Are they?
Yeah.
I can calculate it, but...
It's three, it's almost, well, it's more than twice. In the certified, it's almost, it's two and a half times. Am I, oh, am I wrong? No. The certified, it's two and a half times. The administration, it's probably a percent, but it's not, it's not a times, you know, it's not, it's not over 100% because that would be up to 22, 23. So it's really the non-certified that's...
The non-certified that's huge.
Really huge. Thank you, Mike.
Okay, so the total cost of the 188 positions is almost $15 million in salaries and benefits. Our current certified staff, that would include all of the specialists, to the student-teacher ratio is 12.17. Now, these are all based on last year's numbers. The current classroom teacher to student ratio is 17.6.
What is the difference? Can you describe that in general?
It would be, gee, I can't. It would be art, music, PE teachers, technology teachers...
Psychologists.
Gate teachers, special education, psychologists. It'd be everything on that list except classrooms, teachers.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so here's the projected staffing with the opening of the dual immersion school. Now, what we'll do is we'll go through each of the different elementary schools and show you the shift that's happening between each of the schools. Now, I feel, we feel pretty good about the numbers that we're showing here with, with the dual immersion. The dual immersion is also highlighted in blue here. The black numbers are all just regular classrooms. And if you look on, for example, under fiscal year 2014, '15, Bellevue Elementary, fourth grade, we have class sizes of 13, 13, and 14. Those are special situations that we will look at here in the next couple of months to say, can we combine those from three sections to two sections? Because what also this doesn't have into is any kind of an effect with what Seringa's going to do, which will affect all of these numbers. So we want to get all of that information, put it on these matrices, and look at these types of areas, and look at if we can compress some of those sections down to a higher number per class to alleviate one of the positions. And look at trading, you know, for example, a fourth-grade teacher at Bellevue Elementary into a language art teacher at the middle school. Something like that is what we'll do.
So this is already taking into account the kids from Woodside that would be transferring to Bellevue because of the magnet school?
Yes. Yep. So if you look at 2013, '14, that's the current year we're in right now, those are current numbers that we have in each one of the classes. 2014 and '15, those are the projected numbers of classes at Bellevue Elementary School... 2014 and 15, those are the projected numbers of classes at Bellevue Elementary School, taking into account the shift from students from Woodside to the other schools and the other schools into Woodside.
And the asterisk on the current year, fourth, fifth, is because that's a combined class, correct?
That's a combined class.
Fourth, fifth, next, so it's really a class of seventeen?
Yes, yes. Okay, here's Hemingway. This is what Hemingway looks like right now. They have two strands of dual immersion, kindergarten through fifth grade. And this is what it'll look like in the fiscal year 2014-15. So you see some of these class sizes, like in the second grade at Hemingway with a class size of fourteen and thirteen, and in the third grade as well. If you look at those and say, okay, you know, there may be a possibility of three of those students going from the second grade and the third grade to the Siringa Mountain School. If that happens, can we take a look at those class sizes if you combine them to be twenty-seven and drop it down to twenty-four? Can we get, can we do some kind of a combination like that?
Have they looked at anything like what they did at Bellevue with second and third, a blended class, since those class sizes are so small? Has that been a topic of discussion?
All of those topics of discussion will happen in the next two months.
Because, I mean, even if you don't lose the Siringa kids there, you could do a, what is that, fifteen, that's four, forty-five, three classes?
You could do some type of a combo class and take like a third of the second grade and a third of the third grade and put them into one section.
Right, and make it into three, three segments instead of four.
Right, instead of four, yep.
So I'm just not understanding why in fiscal year thirteen, fourteen, the first grade, okay, I see, exactly, I got you, shifted.
Yep, yep, yep.
Of course.
Right, but you have to have a combined class like what Bellevue did.
Why? The third grade?
Be twenty-seven kids in third grade, because the blue ones are dual immersion.
Oh.
Yeah.
I was not getting that.
Yeah, the blue ones are the dual immersion strand.
The blue is all dual immersion.
I did not understand that, thank you.
But, so you'd have twenty-seven, or?
How many total in Hemingway right now, total students, you know?
I don't, I don't have that number right offhand. Yeah. Sean's not here. Okay, so this is what Haley would look like this year and next year. So for example, in fiscal year 2014-15 kindergarten, those sections are gonna be, are low. That doesn't take into account the attrition that we have from other private schools into our kindergarten programs that has happened in the future, or that happened in the past. It always happens. Those class sizes more likely will be closer to the twenty. Eighteen to twenty typically is where they come in at. But what I want to do is just isolate it in these matrices to just to remind me to take a look at these situations when we have kindergarten registration, for example, to see where these class sizes are, so I know that, you know, we can spot-check this to see if we would have an opportunity to compress those down from four sections to three.
And it appears that we would need kind of a placeholder in fifth grade for next year, that there's not a need this year, but in the subsequent years, there would be a need for a fourth strand in fifth grade?
Typically, the way we handle those things is there's four strands in the fourth grade now. All the fifth graders are moving to the middle school. So there's four strands in the fourth grade, you know, one of those strands, if they didn't get compressed, would become a fifth-grade teacher or something, something like that. Or we would have to add a fifth grade to that section.
Yeah, I mean, because all the subsequent years have four strands and have twenty-ish numbers other than the second-grade year. But, I mean, we've already looked at fourth grade in Bellevue, potentially that's a safe position, possibly a blended class at Hemingway because of the low numbers, or through attrition, it could go down anyway with kids transferring to Siringa.
Yes.
So that we could accommodate that?
One thing that you have to remember is there's currently a teacher in each one of those spots that you saw.
Right.
And then, so either you have to look at kind of opening the spot through attrition, or you're into a rift.
Right.
So what's happened in the past, we haven't had a lot of attrition, or the attrition hasn't been shifted for. And that's why you end up with class sizes like at Bellevue and, for instance, Hemingway, they just replaced their teacher, and therefore, that's why it's sitting there. So next year, though, when we have the discussions, we'll look at, because we do anticipate having some retirements, then you can allow for some movement if you.
Argue it.
Can solid.
To consolidate some things and absorb a little retirement.
If nobody retired next year.
You'd have to rip.
You'd have to, if you, and you wanted to compress, you'd have to look at a rift.
Right, but we are anticipating retirement.
We are.
Do we have those numbers?
Probably not the final one.
No, we, I, I've asked HR to provide a list, and I have the list, and I know that in the next five years, fifty percent of our staff is eligible for retirement, either early retirement or regular retirement.
In the next seven?
Five years.
Early retirement to fifty-five.
And that's why the. That's why the early incentive program was successful. We were in that. When we did it, you had a large group of people that were in that ballpark.
And Mike, would it be true to say that the reason why our fund balance has been pretty stable is that you've taken advantage of, not only when people retired, kind of reshifting some things, but also that early retirement buyout allowed for that to happen?
In Schedule B.
Or the, in the Schedule B, like those three things?
There's a lot of factors. There's a lot of factors. It's been able to shift positions into where the need is, like what we're gonna do this year.
Right.
As well as offering early retirement incentive buyout and Schedule B.
Sure.
Yeah.
Okay.
The combination of a lot of those things. But what I also wanted to point out is if you look at this, the fourth and fifth grade at Haley have five strands in each one of these grades now. And they'll be compressing down to four and three.
So is that the same number?
Those other staff are actually moving to Woodside.
So four times five is twenty.
So it's the same number of sections, just different grade distribution, because there's twenty-three and twenty-three, right?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, this is what Woodside looks like right now and what it'll look like next year. And that's assuming that, you know, all of the dual immersion kids that are involved in the dual immersion program now are gonna move to the Woodside Elementary School. Okay. So now we're gonna move into the new staffing recommendations that we're looking at right now, and how those staffing recommendations are gonna be, those decisions that we make are gonna be coming to the board for approval. It would be the positions having the highest priorities that address the specific problem areas, and when we get into the list, you'll be able to see some of those, a lot of those positions are addressing specific needs in specific schools.
These are not actual recommendations to the board at this point for hiring. These are, like Mike said earlier, this is more of a wish list, where you can see what the priorities are. Because there's gonna be a lot on this wish list that we know we cannot, but, but I wanted the board, you know, when we started the conversation, this round, you know, there was some talk around adding FTEs in certain positions, and I wanted to make sure the board had a very clear picture of where the priorities lie according to the admin team and where those needs are. So that's where you can see, not the actual recommendation from the admin team as to absolutely critical, and we understand that there's no way we can be able to add as much staff as is on this list.
But you've talked about it and you've prioritized it.
We started the chat about it, we haven't prioritized it yet.
Okay. Thank you.
The last time we met with administrative council last week, we just had the administrative council, the principals and directors justify the reason why they needed the positions. That's all we've done so far. We haven't gone any kind of ranking or anything. We just wanted to make sure everybody had a general idea of why that need was there.
And then we can also see the impact that it has on the, on the budget when we're already so much over state funding.
Yep, okay, and it would all be so-so that the positions would also support classroom instruction in the strategic plan. And the positions having the greatest need with the smallest amount of the financial impact to the general fund.
We've talked just about teachers in the last couple of slides and the impact. Are you gonna be taking that same look at administrative and parapro support in those schools as far as putting them where the needs are and shifting things?
That will all come out in the transition with the dual immersion magnet school opening up. At least all of the non-certified positions, the parapro support, those types of things. We'll take all of that stuff into consideration.
Does it also take in consideration other, you know, with the other, the rest of the schools, middle school, high school, carry?
It will, and it will based on the need of those schools, and if we can find pockets of, of being able to reallocate staff from one of the elementary schools into that position, we would look at doing something like that. I mean, for example, when we were looking at Bellevue, in the one class, they had four sections of ten to eleven, one of those staff members, through attrition of another elementary teacher somewhere in the district that's gonna retire or leave, could turn into a world language teacher at the middle school.
We're looking at an organizational.
Yeah, that's what we're trying to ask.
It came out as elementary, and that's why it was just gonna make sure if it was a whole picture.
That's why everybody kind of presented their, their needs to the whole team, because we need to look at it fully as a organization, and that's how we are approaching it.
Great, great, thank you.
Okay, so the requested positions for next fiscal year, it represents positions that the principals and directors are requesting for consideration only. The list will go through the normal staffing process within, that happens every budget year that we do. The district administration will prioritize the list and look at ways to reallocate existing staff through attrition to fill any of the needs within the entire district. Okay, so here's the start of the list for next year. And I'll go through each individual list, position here, and justify why that need is there according to the meeting that we had last week with the administrators.
The projected cost, so is that salary plus benefits?
It includes.
Is that what that number is?
It's salary and benefit cost, a projected salary and benefit cost.
Thank you.
And that's based on, it's based on the average salary of a person coming into the district last fiscal year on Schedule B.
One second, Mike, so I'm just, I'm just looking quickly down the list, and I see, for example, the social worker, obviously that number pops out, so that's based on what?
That's, that number's based on the average salary of a social worker that's in the district right now.
Okay.
Because typically, social workers, when they come into the district, they have master's degrees to get their license. So that would come in at a much higher salary than a regular certified teacher coming in on the salary schedule.
You remind me of the averages you look at, the most workforce workers that spend with us, that would be on salary schedule.
That's kind of what I was, yeah.
So that number could be, look like ninety thousand or something?
Yeah, it could. He's just taking the average of our current.
Okay.
And a lot of these, I mean, all of these numbers are based on averages. Like the average paraprofessional would be salary and benefits of thirty-nine thousand one thirty-seven, because we don't know where each individual's gonna come in on the salary schedule, so I'm just taking an average of them. Okay, so the world language teacher at the middle school, to fulfill the needs of the IB program, another world language teacher is needed. Okay, the ASD paraprofessional at Wood River Middle School. The.
Just consider there's a lot of kids moving up to that level from the elementary. Remodeling that area.
Do you know what the number of kids that are moving up that are under that program?
I don't, I don't mind it.
I don't either.
Yes.
Both of those positions, the ASD paraprofessional and the life skills paraprofessional, are based on the additional students coming up from the elementary schools into the middle school that are not there currently.
So we have kind of a bubble, or maybe just a trending going up?
You're trending upward.
Trending upward.
Yeah, I don't think I would consider it a bubble. I think I would consider it a trend just increasing.
Okay.
Over time, yeah.
So the world language teacher, that's an extra position. What, I know that, and I'm somewhat familiar with the IB structure, but not a hundred percent, so I think that what happens is that we have currently two English, is that right, classes, and that'll go down to one, or to make room for that class?
Again, that would depend on requirements and attrition, so that's a position that possibly could be involved in that attrition piece that we're talking about, but we don't know yet. So because of IB's requirement on the second language as part of the core curriculum, whether that's through attrition in the language arts department, we're not sure. I know that we have a teacher taking a sabbatical that Fritz isn't really planning on replacing next year, but that teacher has a right to come back to that position. So there's a lot of, there's a lot of things in the works that could impact whether we actually need to hire a new position for that, or whether that comes from within. So again, it's looking at the resources that we have, and what things are moving, and then how we replace that.
Right, okay.
But that's a need for a different position that is not currently filled.
Right, okay. So when they made these requests to you, was there any kind of write-up that they did to say why that position is necessary?
Yes.
Okay.
On all of these positions.
And do you have that in your presentation?
No, I do not, but it will be on the website.
Okay, so we can have access to the, those write-up, the background information as to what this position is needed for?
You will.
Okay.
It will be, I'll post all of that stuff on the website. It'll be under the finance section, under, I think it's fourteen, fifteen budget or something. But I'll have this whole presentation, as well as all the justification on why the principals and the directors felt like they needed those positions.
Great, thank you.
Okay, the school resource officer at Wood River Middle School. The current resource officer is provided and paid for by Blaine County Sheriff's Office. At some point in time in the future, with budget constraints by Blaine County, we're anticipating this position will either be reduced or go away completely. If we wish to maintain this service and the presence at Wood River Middle School, we need to look at alternatives and the funding goes away or gets reduced. And whether that would be a district employee or a contracted employee like we have at Wood River High School, that would still be determined, but my guess is that we would look at contracting that position out to either Blaine County Sheriff's or Haley Police Department.
Again, I've had a lot of conversations with Gene Ramsey around this position, and they've already pulled Chad Schirmyer back into an officer role part-time, so he is not currently at the middle school as much as he was. Haley has stepped up to the plate and give us a few more hours of their time from one of their officers at no charge, but at some point, they're losing their funding as well from different levels, and so they're anticipating that they're gonna have a hard time continuing to fund that position full-time.
Okay, Wood River High School is asking for a ESL slash special education paraprofessional, and it would be halftime ESL, halftime special ed. And with the expansion of the IB program in. and increased number of the ASD students coming into the high school, the need arises to accommodate the growth of students needing these services. So it would be to take care of the IB language type of problem by shifting other staff members into the IB. Parapro staff would be the need for the ESL portion of this.
And what that looks like is, for example, we have an ESL, or we have an ESL teacher right now that is also certified in language, certified in Spanish and Japanese. If we move them to the language side in order to accommodate for IB students, then we need to replace the ESL side of that as well. So there's a, there's a pull to it. Again, this could be affected through attrition, but the ESL program has given up a full-time, or we have reallocated a full-time person. And when Matt Wells left that position, we did not refill that in ESL. We refilled that in science in order to accommodate the greater requirements, graduation requirements from the state. So those are, those are all impactors on that.
Okay.
And that certified position is that one?
Okay. Wood River High School is also asking for a .5 FTE Construction Academy teacher. And during fiscal year 2011-12, that position was cut from a 1.0 FTE to a .5 FTE based on the wish of that certified staff member, wanted to teach halftime. So the high school is requesting that to be reinstated back to a 1 FTE and expanding that program not only to Construction Academy, but looking at some type of a academy of building cabinets, cabinetry academy.
Is there a demand for that?
Evidently, they feel like that there must be a demand for that. Okay. Silver Creek High School is requesting a .5 FTE school counselor. Right now, they have a counselor that is shared, I believe it's one day a week from the high school. And it's just not covering the basic needs of the population at Silver Creek High School. So they would like to have a dedicated halftime counselor position that would be dedicated only to the alternative school for, you know, like a block of eight to 12 in the morning.
The reason, the reason it looks like a full .5, currently, they share a counselor with the high school. So the counselor's at Wood River High School for .8 and at Silver Creek for .2, which makes up a full FTE. They would like to have a .5 rather than just the .2. So it's an increase of the .3. However, then that .2 ends up back at the high school for a full-time position. So you're actually adding a full halftime at the Silver Creek.
Has anybody done analysis about how many counselors per student, the ratio is at Silver Creek versus the high school and what it would be with this? Because that's what I'd like to see is parity.
And I think that's, was Mike's point, but I can, I can give you the exact ratio.
Well, I think all of that would be vetted through the Admin Council when you guys make recommendations as all those things.
That's correct.
Yeah. All of those discussions will be held some type in the future, whether or not that possible solution would be taking a half, or the additional .3 from the high school and moving it to the alternative school. So the high school would have 2.5 FTE instead of 2.8 to accommodate that or whether we're going to hire the full half FTE.
Got it. Yeah. And the beauty of that, the situation is it's geographically right there, you know? So if you need to parse it that much.
Those, yeah, those are all discussions that we'll have in the future here. Okay. We are on developmental preschool, paraprofessional. Haley Elementary is, they're moving developmental preschool, the developmental preschool program from Woodside into Haley next year. The Woodside program had a high number of students participating in it this year. So we hired a long-term substitute paraprofessional to get through this fiscal year. And so this would be to replace that long-term sub para into a full-time paraprofessional at Haley to keep the demand of that developmental preschool program in place. Okay. The next one would be Woodside. Now, they don't, with the shift of the dual immersion program into Woodside Elementary, they don't have any preschool program there now. And to add a preschool program into Woodside would require either adding a modular building to the, to the land down there, the area down there, or to add on to the building. So Brad says, you know, the, Woodside said, we'd love to have a preschool program down here, but we know that if there's, if we do develop a preschool program there in the future, there's going to be building restraints and we have to add on to the building to accommodate that. So it's on the wish list, but we just know that if we do something like that, it's going to be a lot more additional money than just the 74,000. It's going to take building needs to take care of it.
The difference there is that the staffing cost is an ongoing cost.
Okay. We'll get into the social worker at Haley Elementary School. This is a little different situation. In 2009-10, we had a social worker position that was three days a week at Haley, two days a week in Cary. This position was eliminated in 2010-11 to hire one of the new staff members in that calendar, that fiscal year. The three new positions that we hired were the IB Coordinator, the DI Teacher at the high school, and an English Teacher at the high school. So that position got shifted into one of those three. Currently, Haley has one FTE social worker and one additional social worker coming from Bellevue Elementary School one day a week. Cary School has a social worker that is being provided four days a week to Hemingway, one day a week to Cary. And by hiring this social worker, Hemingway would get their five days, Cary would get their two days, Bellevue would get their five days, and Haley would get their additional social worker support that they had three years ago. I got that all right?
So basically, we're just going back to what they had in the 2010?
Back what they had 2010.
So the point of that is that it's not just a Haley position. It really affects the entire district because it shifts services back so that Bellevue gets their full five days, Hemingway five days, Cary that is up one to two days, and then Haley gets an additional three-day support rather than drawing from.
And if you look, if you look at the justification, they've done a good job on justifying the caseloads that each one of those positions hold currently in the district right now. And there definitely is a need because of the caseload structure at Haley to accommodate a social worker position there.
So when you look at ratios on this new scenario, should the position be added of student per, or the caseload per social worker, having two at Haley is the same ratio to having one in Hemingway, one at Bellevue, one, is there one at Woodside as well? And then the couple of days at Cary is it about the same by adding that position?
I, it's so distorted now that I think that probably Haley would still be a little higher than everybody else.
So even with a whole nother position, Haley would be still a higher caseload per worker?
Yeah. But you've got to keep in mind the programming that Haley's picking up in the dual immersion magnet move.
Is going to increase that load?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. Because of the shift between Woodside, the ASD program is moving into Haley, the base program is there.
Base program, developmental preschool.
The developmental preschool is there. So you have a lot more additional caseloads going into Haley.
Okay.
So it's more looking at caseloads.
Right.
You know, per social worker as opposed to social workers per building.
Right. It's looking at caseloads and with student need, following the student need. And I keep looking at those numbers and going, wow, that's a really high salary. But it's really like an $80,000 salary with fringe benefits.
Probably, probably.
Yeah. With the, when you break that out. Yeah. Okay.
You know, that was my first question.
Yeah. Okay, Mike. Next time, put salary and benefits in total. I'm just teasing. This is a great presentation. Yeah.
I had a hard time fitting in when I got on these one slides. Okay. The next one is a paraprofessional at Hemingway Elementary School. Currently, Hemingway has a student in the kindergarten program with fairly severe ASD in which the parents wish to keep the student at Hemingway. In order to accommodate the parents' wishes, they're requesting a full-time paraprofessional that are being pulled out from other programs in the schools to maintain this, to help with this student. So what this would do is alleviate the stress that's going on at Hemingway with the other programs by pulling that para support out of them and provide the support in ASD program with a full-time position.
So what, what are we legally bound to do in terms of aggregating our special services and providing geographic proximity for people with special needs?
I believe legally that we just have to provide transportation to that student down to an area where we can accommodate the needs of the student.
Okay. But you're saying that they don't want to participate in the ASD program? Is that correct?
No.
They want to stay mainstream?
I'm saying the parents do not want to pull the student out of Hemingway to let him come down to Haley where we can provide better services. They want the student to stay at Hemingway.
Even if we provided them with transportation to access the program, they don't want their student pulled away from that school.
Right. To be in the official program. What, do we have any control over saying it's not developmentally appropriate here for your student, it is here?
I don't believe so.
No, I don't think so.
Historically speaking, we've provided at the school as well instead of made the student shift schools, if I'm correct.
Technically speaking, that parent could say, I don't want my child to receive specialized services.
Right. Which is essentially what they're doing.
And so, well, they don't, they're saying they don't want specialized at Haley next year. They want services provided at their school. But technically speaking, that parent could say, okay, I don't want specialized. I want my child mainstream and therefore deal with it in essence.
Right.
And then you're dealing with it. And that could be a highly, high-needs student with ASD and you have to deal with it in the regular classroom.
How many years are we anticipating that need?
The comment that I'll make with that is, is if you really look at the population of those student needs over the past 10 years, it's continually grown more and more and more.
Right.
My theory, and I have no data to support this, is the more advanced you make your programs in the district.
The more you attract.
The more people will come in and take advantage of those programs.
People are.
Because if you look at the population that we have of those types of students, ours is higher than the state average is.
By significant.
By quite a few percentage points.
Okay.
Okay. Wood River High School is requesting a .5 FTE ESL world language teacher. That was one that Molly was just talking about. That is also based on their needs of the dual immersion, not the dual immersion, but the, well, the dual immersion program and the IB program coming into the high school. Because what they're asking for is an additional .2 FTE of a Latin teacher as well to cover some of those language.
And also that law with that one, I think, is all of the time, it's been a few years or so.
Right.
And I'd like to comment.
Sure.
Just, one thing to keep in mind is when Principals or anyone makes these types of recommendations, what they're talking about is maintaining the level of service. Anytime you reduce your staffing, you reduce the level, the current level of support. In other words, take Hemingway, for instance. They stress their, their parapro, sorry. For instance, in Hemingway, they need a paraprofessional, but what they've done, their paraprofessional staff is stressed beyond the maximum. So they can't provide essential services that they would normally provide at other schools. So something has to break.
Yep.
Has to give. So you either reduce services, can't do the same amount of services. Social worker at Haley, for instance, with the caseload that's coming, there's no way she can maintain that type of service. So you just look at, all right, we reduce services or we try to maintain the same level of services, but that's going to be, some should be.
Sure.
I'd also like to make a comment. I know this is at the time that these are being officially presented, supported for reasons.
Can you introduce yourself?
Yes. My name is Jaclyn Jones. I'm a Bellevue Elementary School teacher. But I wanted to go back and just make a comment about the preschool teacher at Woodside. I don't think that was taken very serious at the time. But Woodside does not have a preschool program. They won't have one next year if this position's not added. It's highly recommended, just like every other elementary school, it's a preschool program. It's very beneficial to making the rest of the grade level successful. There is a need to have a preschool in the neighborhood, even if it's available at Haley or Bellevue. Many times, parents are not willing to make that type of connection for a four-year-old. So I know at the time that this will be presented, there'll be a lot more supportive information, but I would like for everybody to take note in that today, not just quickly pass over that because it's going to involve something more than a position, making a room for it or bringing in a portable. And I think that's very detrimental to having our programs successful at the magnet school to also provide preschool.
None of these have really been skipped over. I want everyone to know that these have been passionately presented at Admin Council by all the administrators that brought these forward. So, and that includes Brad. So the reasoning behind these is, has been, and it is still being vetted. But as you see, when you start looking at, they all have reasoning, solid reasoning and passion behind them. But we also have to look at it, you know, as the whole, what can we get done through attrition as much as possible, reallocation of resource to make sure that we're taking care of as many of these needs as we possibly can. But what the Admin Team also understands is realistically, adding 19 to 20 positions to the school district will put us in financial dire straits very quickly. So it's a real conundrum and it's a real balancing act. But I want to know we're working very hard at that. And we understand the need for those type of programs, absolutely.
I just want to quickly add that Jaclyn mentioned the need, but we did present the numbers of students that have been waitlisted in the other preschool programs to the board. So you have already seen those numbers. Just a reminder.
Yeah. And a lot of these positions, when you look at the actual documentation behind it that supports the need for these positions, you'll see, you know, the passion and the things that go into these things as that. Because really, Woodside, by not having a preschool program there, you're taking a lot of the need away from that existing school. And you're either forcing it out to other schools or the parents are just not taking advantage of it. And that's going to be more likely the case, is the parents are not going to take advantage of the preschool program. Okay. Page two. Wood River High School is asking for a .2 FTE Latin language teacher. This is to help alleviate some of the stress coming, not stress, but some of the demand coming in from the IB program into the secondary schools. We have a district-wide school psychologist. This is the position that Debbie presented to you guys about, in a work session, I think about six weeks ago. And that also is a salary that that person will come in with a master's degree. That salary may be a little bit high, but it's based on the two, the average of the two salaries and benefit package that those psychiatrists, psychologists have in the district right now. district right now. BAC SD currently has two psychologists serving approximately 1,700 students. The National Association of School Psychologists recommends one psychologist to every seven, every 500 to 750 students. This additional position would bring the ratio down to 1 to 1,150 students. It also would give the ability to, currently, the psychologists provide special education 504 plans and GATE assessments, and it would also be able to support the RTI process, intervention programs, and monitoring with the severe and emotionally disciplined issues that are going on with the schools right now. Okay, school nursing. We've also had discussions regarding school nursing. We currently have a contract with South Central District Health. That contract is existing at 825 hours per year for nursing services to all of the schools in the district. We ran out of hours, and we've extended that out this year to another 250 hours to make it through this fiscal year. So the difference, I mean, if you look at this, it's a .8 FTE request for a school nurse. Right now, we're, we have about a .5, so this would be just the additional cost of the difference between the .5 and the .8, because the rest of it's already on a contract with South Central District Health.
So, just to clarify, so 825 hours plus 250 is a little over 1,000 hours, and that's considered a part-time position?
Yeah, a full-time position costs around 1,500.
A full-time is 1,500, okay.
And that's contracted, correct? That's not provided?
It is contracted right now with South Central District Health. And that would give, if you look at the combination of both of these, the .8 FTE school nurse for the elementaries and the .7 in the secondaries, that would provide enough nursing services to where they could provide the support that they need at all of the elementary schools and all of the secondary schools, because right now, they're just, they're basing their needs on highest crisis. And a lot of the classroom teachers are taking, are being forced to administer medicine and insulin injections and things like that that they're really not responsible to do or they should be doing, but they have to do it because of the nursing services are not provided to those. So it's a liability issue for the school district, because it puts us in a situation to where we're, we're not really forcing them, but we're asking the staff to provide these services that the school nurses cannot provide, that they're not trained for.
Does a lot of that fall on the social workers, too?
I don't, I never did hear that.
Yeah, I asked if a lot of the nursing support ends up falling on the social workers as well.
Absolutely. They involve medical back and forths, or, and then the secretaries pick up the slack when it comes to giving medical options.
I know that Terry is the 504, kind of heads up the 504s at Haley, and, you know, we run up a lot more nursing hours just in the 504 than out of the 504 lines, and the fact that we have teachers that are administering insulin injections and the amount of anaphylactic shock issues that are coming about, and Haley has 10 just in their building, where you're talking life and death type of situations where we don't have medical professionals, you know, on hand at that time. We run into some of those things. And the fact is, yeah, I mean, definitely do not have either, you know, nursing trampi.
Okay, let's move on. 3.5 FTE for gifted and talented teachers. Now, this is based on the study that Boise State has provided. That study's not going to be officially released to us until next week, but they have, they have released some recommended preliminary recommendations that would suggest a gate teacher at each of the different schools. So based on the recommendation, we're saying we probably should be looking at three and a half new gifted and talented teachers district-wide.
How many do we currently have?
Three and a half. We have half-time at the high school and half-time at the middle school, so those would be bumped up to full-time. So it's not necessarily just for the elementary schools. Okay, we had the elementary nutrition specialist. This is with the Food Action Group that came in and gave the presentation to the board. The school gardening program coordinator, and the academy of the practical instructional I think they call it the academy of the practical applied sciences position or something, something like that. But those are, those are those three positions that they have requested. We have a technology integration specialist that the technology department has requested because of all of the new technology in, coming into the classrooms now. There's a struggle going on with classroom teaching and classroom student learning on all of the new technology needs that are going on in the schools. So this would, would provide services to the support staff and to the students on how to utilize those technology aids the best they can. So it'd be just like another hall in the district.
So as we look at this list, this isn't in order by any means, but, you know, when you look at the amount of technology that we've added to the district just since the plant facilities levy, the amount of just hardware that we've added to the district has more than doubled. The budget has, has more than doubled. The amount of technical support needed for teachers to know how to use that technology has grown exponentially, and yet the department itself has not at all. In fact, we've cut a couple of programmers when they moved with Silverback. So that's, that's a concern, and that's one of our greatest areas needed for teacher training, website development, those type of things, and the move to the Google platform, there's just a lot going on in technology, and yet the infrastructure hasn't really been kept up to speed with the, everything that's going on in the classrooms. Paul's been a great addition, but we could use two more of them.
Okay, so if I was, if I was budgeting all of these positions into the budget, that would be the budget number that I would put in to next year's fiscal year to cover these positions. $1.45 million. Okay? So how do these new positions affect the general fund budget next year as well as five years into the future? Now, this is a hypothetical example of we hired three full-time equivalency positions based on the salary, the average teacher salary from last year. The projected salaries, the cost of the general fund this coming year would be $222,114. If you project that over, over five years on the average increases that we've been providing the staff and the benefit costs, that number grows to $1.2 million five years from now. So that's assuming that we hire three positions this year and nothing else over the next four. I mean, just by looking at the numbers, I mean, just compounding it, if we hired three additional staff every year, you're going to be up into the $4 million area over the course of those years.
And that's not assuming you hired a school psychologist and a social worker, because that would be that entire budget, just with those two. That'd be two positions instead of three.
Yes. Okay, so upcoming budget topics. So March 6th, we have the department budgets, and that will be including, it would be all the departments, the major departments, maintenance, transportation, curriculum, dual immersion, IB, communications, special education, professional development budgets, the business office, technology, buildings and grounds, HR, everybody outside, the major departments. Okay, for this March 20th, we're looking at schools and athletic budgets. Would include all of the schools, Bellevue, Haley, Hemingway, Cary, Woodside, Wood River Middle School, the high school, and Silver Creek High School. And all of the athletic budgets that would include Cary High School, Wood River Middle School, and also Wood River High School.
Just to go back a second, did you say that currently we spend about $15 million in salary and benefits, or is that not the right number that I remember?
No, we, on those 188 positions, we're over the state recommendation is $15 million.
That's just the overage?
That's just the overage.
Okay, and what is our total budget right now for salary and benefits approximately?
Total budget's about $52 million, and 85% of that is salary and benefits.
Okay. Forty-something. All right, thank you.
Forty, yeah, probably 44, 45.
Or 45, yeah.
Yes.
How's that compare to the state average as far as percentage of actual budget?
85%.
I think it's pretty close to where normal school districts are, because, you know, there are certain, certain things that school districts just cannot take out of their budget, like utilities and supply-type things. You know, we probably spend a little bit more on professional development out of the general fund than most other school districts do, because a lot of school districts that spend a lot of money out of, on professional development are spending it out of federal funds, where most of our professional development comes out of the general fund. But I think, you know, if you look at average school districts, it typically runs between 83 and 88% salaries and benefits.
Mike, I'm just asking, so what, when you list the budget amount, last year, what was the budget, the 13, 14 budget, the total budget?
For the general fund?
No, the whole one, the whole budget?
I would have to look at it.
74.9, something like that, about 75, maybe it was 80.
That also takes into account the investment money, the plant facilities monies and stuff like that.
That's what I'm, that's what I'm getting at.
That has to be accounted for, but isn't really spent.
Is that, so, so that, so it's 52 million plus the six annually approximately that's coming in from the, from the plant and facility, is that right? I mean, I'm just trying to get up to that number, to the, to the total budget number that we're going to be aiming for here.
I, I, I'm not ready to, I'm not prepared to answer what those budget numbers are, because I haven't even looked at the federal programs or the food service or plant facilities for next year. And I don't recall right offhand of what total overall budget was for this year.
I think out of our total budget, I figured out, and this is a couple of years ago, about 55% is spent on salary and benefits, somewhere around there. Well, including plant and, plant and facilities that you can't spend on salary. It's earmarked specifically for... Right, but I'm, I'm still, to keep in mind, that 55% of the money we're spending is not, is spent on, I mean, that's a lot different than an 85% number is what I'm saying, and I understand what you're saying, too.
But that also takes into account the $20 million in fund balance between the general fund and school plant fund that will never be spent, or it'll be spent over the next years. So that's why, if you look at the overall budget number, it's inflated by a lot of, a lot of money, because some of that, a lot of it's earmarked for specific purposes, like invested money through the school plant facilities fund that will never be spent.
Usually when you're, when you're looking at percentage of budget for salaries, you got to look at your maintenance and operation budget or your M&amp;O budget. So it's 85% of your M&amp;O budget, not your overall.
Okay, April 3rd, we'll be talking about estimated revenues. And what this will do is show a historical of what's happened with state, local, and other revenues over the past years, much like what this one did with revenues and expenses. And we'll also look at estimated revenues from all of the federal funds as well in that meeting. April 17th meeting will be a projected salary and benefits costs, what kind of, what those projections are going to be. And there'll be a lot of examples, like, you know, what we anticipate in health insurance increases and dental insurance increases. You know, most of it will be based on, you know, if we give the staff a 1% increase, this is what the cost is to the general fund. I probably won't divulge information about what I am expecting to budget in each one of those categories, because it'll be before negotiations start, so. This one will probably be a little bit more generic, and more than likely, this one will also include all of the federal programs as well, because I think we'll have some time to, to go through those pretty quick.
So, and I just was wondering, when are we going to see estimated attritions so that we can match, so we can see, well, can we, you know, we're having two positions down here, and so we can pay for, you know, something like a social worker?
Well, obviously, the closer we get to those deadlines, the better numbers we're going to have for you. So as people start announcing, you know, the retirements and so forth. It could also depend upon, you know, whether the board wanted to consider another early buyout through the negotiations process. That could all impact all of that, but we should have better numbers for you as far as attrition and conversation as an admin team or leadership team around where some possible movement could be, where we can fill some of those needs that were on that list without necessarily going out and adding FTE.
By this last April meeting, we'll be in a position to where we can start making some of those recommendations on what staff we're going to reallocate into other positions. By the April 17th date.
Okay, yeah, that's good. Because this is 50% of it, right? And then the other 50% is like the cost. Well, but I mean, no, no, what I'm trying to say is this is 50% of what the board needs to see, to make a decision like that. It's, this is the wishlist, the other is the, how can we save the money on this side?
We're going to try and, and do most of that work for you, so that we, when we bring the recommendations forward, we're not going to be asking for all that. We're going to do our jobs to sharpen our pencils and make sure that we're looking at where we can fill those needs, like I said, through attrition or through other things, and then we'll bring a recommendation forward to the board. Right now, our negotiations are scheduled for May 1st and 2nd, 8 and 9, and I think Kathy, you're sitting on that. So that's, you know, pretty close to after we finish the budget, you know, numbers, and... So we're going to do our job to make sure that, to make your job as easy as possible.
Great, great. And, you know, I think just as a general comment that I just wanted to put out there for the board, if we don't have income coming in, in fact, if we have a little, it's going down a little bit on the state side, that we need to do the same in terms of our, you know, just keeping it in mind, that we're not spending more with less.
Yeah, well, I just want to say, I think that this is extremely helpful, to just get this as a preview, to get the big picture, so that when you do come with recommendations, that we understand that this is where you were working from, and this is kind of how you've narrowed it down, and what you, what measures you have taken to minimize the impact to the budget and to maximize the benefit to the students.
We're going to do the best we can, but, you know, as you saw, I, it's going to be really difficult to please everybody, to the extent that they, that they're passionate about a lot of those positions. So obviously, we've got to look at it holistically as an admin team, and they've been awesome, they've been great, and we're just starting the conversation now after presenting our passionate pleas for our, you know, for what we would like to see is now, how do we, how do we come together to make as much of that happen as we possibly can by each of us, you know, making sure that we're, make, you know, putting the resources where the needs really are, so that we can create those spots that we really feel are the most important. So it's really a prioritization as a whole organization, and, and the admin's been, been amazing. But like I said, it's going to be pretty impossible to do it all, but we're going to do as much as we possibly can.
Yeah, this is great.
And just to conclude, the things that I'm looking at of what I feel like we need to do as a district, you know, the conservative measures that we have taken on in the last six years have allowed us to add new programs like we have, while we still exist, sustain the existing programs, and continue to offer the services that, without being capped or continued within the general fund that most other school districts in the state of Idaho just cannot provide to their constituents. And we're also making the recommendation that we continue the conservative approach, just not to affect, to have the least amount of effect to the general fund, fund balance over the next... over the next several years.
Well, I just want to say one more thing. You hear these commercials on television about how Idaho is ranked number forty-eight in the states, but what they don't clarify often is that's in funding, and so we look like we have so much money and that we're doing so well, that we're comparing ourselves to the rest of the state that is at the bottom of the barrel. So when we compare ourselves nationally, we're not really doing that great, but we're doing a good job, and I think that if we continue what you've suggested and stay on that path, you know, we can do what's best for students and not falter.
That's our goal, is not to make such a disruption in the district that it's going to affect student learning.
Mike, we've been able to achieve great things on a limited revenue, on what we have been getting in declining revenue, and I think we can do, do more. So thank you very much for your presentation, Mike. We appreciate your hard work.
Thank you.
Right on time. Mike and John.
Yeah, that's great.
I know a lot of, all of you guys that put this.
The whole admin team, really.
The whole staff here and putting this together.
Yeah, it's, it's critical.
Before we adjourn, so Mike, you've, you've put up your March sixth, the last meeting. Kathy has had a trip planned, and I have an unexpected trip that week.
Okay.
Which leaves us, I don't know if we.
We won't have a quorum.
I don't, I don't know if we need a quorum for a workshop.
Yes.
We do need a quorum for a workshop?
Yeah.
If it's unofficial.
Okay, so I think we're going to have to change that date.
We may have to be changing it April, April third.
Lori, I think we'll be in contact with us.
Okay.
Oh, right.
Kathy changed that?
Yes, we had to travel.
And I'm going to be out of town the fourth or the ninth.
Yeah, of March.
Okay.
March. The March date, the next one in March is the one we need to move to the, maybe the next week.
Yeah, that's not going to be an issue, it's just, the issues are going to run into it. It's taken me about two weeks to prepare for this one.
Yeah.
To get all of the information, so if I can maintain a two-week time period in there, or close to that, ten days or so, we can make sure that these are well-informed enough and there's enough detail in there to accommodate everything. That's my only concern.
Okay.
Because the intent is, is to have the full budget to you by the May board meeting, where you have one full month to look at the budget and approve it in June.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Well, you can work with Lori, with Rod, throw that thought to me, Dave.
Yeah, thank you, guys.
All right. Well. With no further business, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Not needing a second, but thank you.
Okay.
Do I hear all in favor of adjournment?
Aye.
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 Meeting adjourned.